To the flag, United States of America. Here it stands, one nation.
Next up on our agenda, we have comments from the audience regarding items for future consideration. I'm sorry for being so far away from you, but we have election tomorrow and they use on the board, so we need to set that up. So would anyone care to address the board on items for future consideration or items for today as well? Would anyone care to address the board? We do- oh, come on up. Oh, where does he?
Now, usually we have a microphone for here to stand by.
Normally we do.
Well, I'm just gonna get on up here.
Just come on up. Come on up and talk to us.
My name's John Walzak, I live on 114th Street in Hales Corners. It's my understanding that we may be discussing Hales Corners Elementary, possible sale of it, closing it down. Is that correct or? No?
It's not on the agenda for tonight, seriously. There, we are looking at the noise from Hales Corners, but I don't know what's-
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda?
Not tonight, but we are having a tour.
Wednesday night?
We have a tour coming up on Wednesday. And our facility and finance committee is just exploring all the options for improving that facility. And you're sure welcome to attend.
That's Wednesday night?
Wednesday night, we're having a tour of the building. And then the financial facility committee is meeting again when, September?
September eighth.
The date has a- no, no, the date's on Saturday. But it'll meet again September.
I'd just like to voice my concern about that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I know I've talked to other parents and I have my neighbor right here also. We both have kids that go to that school. We just want to make sure that if anything were to happen to that school, any decision, that we would have some kind of a referendum vote on what's gonna happen to that school.
We really appreciate your input and thank you for coming tonight.
Alright, thanks.
Sure that, we are discussing it, not tonight, but in the future. I believe those plans are online, correct, Kathy? Not yet?
Sorry, speak up. Not that I'm aware of.
Not yet.
No, because they haven't really-
We do have some preliminary drawings of different ways we could ask for that. So-
Alright, appreciate.
I'll be able to follow along with you. We will invite you to-
Sorry, I was listening to Joseph Allen, I live directly across the street from the elementary school. When will this be discussed?
Address.
11328 West Scottsdale.
I did first. That's my fault.
Sorry, I live right at the front doors.
We have a financial facility committee meeting, maybe two once a month.
Okay.
And the next one, we can sketch it out, but it will probably be within the first two weeks in September.
The first two weeks in September?
So you just keep an eye on the website and that's where we post those meetings.
Okay.
And then you're sure welcome to come and follow along. This Wednesday, as we mentioned, there's a tour of the building.
And who is that tour for?
It's for the board, but it's a publicly noticed meeting, so anyone can come along.
Okay, so it's for the board, that's the school board or?
School board, right.
Okay, and the finance board is a separate board?
Finance is a committee of this board.
Okay.
And they meet once a month and they hammer out a lot of the details. That are in tonight, what we're discussing is the process. When and how we're gonna make decisions, and you might be interested in that.
Right, because that would be the capital improvement.
Right, just the process of how we're gonna make decisions, because for example, on the- On the timetable, we want to involve parents, we want to involve staff, we need to involve the community. So you'll be able to hear about that later on.
Okay, great, thank you.
Alright, thank you, thank you for coming. Would anyone else care to address the board? Would anyone else care to address? Are you listening? Okay. The next up on our agenda, I would, we have our number four consent agenda. A, approval of staff resignation. And B, approval of new staff hires. And before, this is where we vote on every, all the items in the consent agenda are voted out with one vote. But first we, without discussion, but first we allow board members to poll any of the items. Would anyone like to poll A or B? See none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. A, approval of staff resignation, and B, approval of new staff hires. So vote. And move, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? See none, a motion carries. Next up, we have our reports. A, we will have committee reports. And I believe we will make a committee that is mapping the financial facilities committee meeting. And Kathy has a little bit of a voice problem. So we're gonna have Doug give us a little bit of an update on that.
A week ago, the finance committee met and spent time reviewing the proposed budget. We need to have a budget that is approved for publication according to the calendar that I provided. That would be within the first ten days of September. Out of that meeting came a number of questions which I provided explanations for against the material I sent out. In particular, I want to draw attention to the fact that Eric had provided some explanation for staffing plan for technology department. Also, I did an analysis of my budget changes because questions were raised about why certain areas of the budget are going up or down. And on page fifteen of the materials that I provided, I noted that the general fund is expected to increase by about $740,000, 2.9%. Improvement of instruction, central services, which is technology, communications, and benefits for retirees are the three main areas driving our budget. Also, put another way, salaries, purchase services, equipment account for about 85% of recommended budget. The question was asked, how do we get from an understanding of the budget to a tax levy? 2.94% is the increase in general fund expenditures projected. We are also expected to lose about 2.5% of our revenue, most of it to state aid, I should say, of our non-tax revenue. That brings us to 2.5% increase that would be allowable under the state revenue. Editorializing on my part, I guess, said the proposed budget is consistent with district initiatives for improvement of instruction, technology, communications. Also add the budget in there again. Document. There had been a question raised about the professional development reallocation. And noted that that budget was put together back in March. There weren't any staff members hired for that, we didn't even know if the teachers filling the age, filling the positions were B. They were eventually filled with people and we didn't quite make the cost neutral idea that we had hoped for because of salaries and benefits that were payable to those people. Part of the program, it's all against a deficit of about $32,000.
The rest of them. We also will discuss the budget from the-
Yes.
Yeah, we can do the rest.
Cut this off.
Exactly, yeah, we can get into details under that item, but the budget was presented. We also looked at the Edutain parking lot, we got an update on that. Please, maybe have any- Striking, up to the parking lot, we had just-
Yes, striking.
A striking event. We looked at long range plan and started again discussing the communication plan, how are we going to reach our around the needs of long range capital in the project. Any other committee reports? Thank you for some of that.
Policy committee meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM at the Capitol Room.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is B, upcoming crisis management.
That's me. Just to give you an update as to where things stand with our training that's happening later this month. You all received, I'm not gonna say you all, you all received a email a couple of weeks ago, I believe, from Dr. Holtz, kind of explaining some of the training that's gonna be taking place right here. This morning, parents and staff received similar letters explaining the process and why we're doing the training. The training is a joint effort with the Greenfield Police Department. They're heading the operation, Greenfield Fire Department, Hales Corners Police and Fire, Greendale Police and Fire, and both the Greenfield and Little School Districts are all participating in the training. Training starts for our staff on Monday, the 25th, right here in the auditorium. The entire staff will be listening to a presentation from the Greenfield Police Department and Greenfield Fire Department, about a two-hour presentation that is part of our August Institute. So all the teachers are all, will already be here for that. So they'll be here from, I believe it's 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, Monday the 25th. There are a lot of the questions will be answered as far as exactly how the active scenarios or the real-life scenarios will take place. That training is on August 27th, and that is from about 7:45 in the morning till noon. Again, during August Institute, when the teachers are already here. That portion of the training will be for about 150 to 160 staff members, so that will probably be more limited to just our teachers. That's just based on logistics and the capabilities of what the police and fire can offer us at that time. We'll be doing that training right in the science wing of the high school, it'll be in three of the science rooms. With about 50 to 55 teachers per room. There'll be a trainer from the police and fire department in each room the entire time, so if there's any, if there's anyone ever has any questions or whatever, they can ask. But that day, we'll have a briefing for about a half hour as to how the day's gonna play out. Then there's going to be an active shooter scenario that teachers will be getting firsthand experience as to how they would react and what kind of things they could do to make sure that our students and themselves are safe. Then there'll be a breakdown, where police and fire will kind of break things down and talk about things that we could have done better or what they can do better. They'll swap out their police and fire personnel. Our teachers will remain in place, and then we'll do the scenario again. And we'll try to do things better, gain more experience that way. There's probably gonna be about time for two scenarios. And that should be pretty much the homework, so you guys are more than welcome to attend or observe or jump in the classroom if you'd like. I'm here to field any questions that I hope I have the answers to.
Hi, Mr.-
Yes?
Now, Will, because we're truly here at the high school, will the principals of the other schools talk to their staff? Uniqueness of their building?
Yeah, they, yes, I mean, every building is unique and every, I mean, if something were to happen at Hales Corners Elementary, the response team to be there first would be different than possibly will be, or who would respond first to the high school. So there's a lot of logistics that we can't control. But that's something that we're going to, the idea is to get a general, overall idea of what to do wherever you are, whether it be this school or another school or, you know, at a mall or something. But yes, you're right. There's also different theories as far as what to do with different age groups. So that will be something that we'll talk about, that they'll talk about on Monday during the presentation. And something if a teacher wants to ask or get more information about, they can ask during the downtime in between the two scenarios on Wednesday. Nationwide, the theory now is to, for older students, from my understanding, based on what the police have talked about with us, it's for older students to try to fight and, you know, take out the active shooter. Obviously, that doesn't work for elementary students or their teachers, because they're trying to protect those students. So there are very various plans of action. So those will be discussed, but there's only so many scenarios that we can run through on Wednesday. Otherwise, the training would obviously get too large and are too long, basically. We've been working on this for several months, I think the dates back to late 2013. I think it was December, I think it might have started, and the police had started, the Greenfield Police Department had started this process even before then, so.
Yeah, the first meeting was in the-
Yeah, it was-
It was basically Chief Wilms' initiative, and we were all extremely thankful for the show right now. Between the two schools, right? Because it's a big task for this department to take on. We talked about the burning item, what we sent out. Even though it's at the high school, all our teachers will be involved in it, so.
And the, it got larger as we got more involved, because at first it was just the Greenfield Police and Fire Department. And we said, well, if there's something to that on one of our schools, Greenfield Police and Fire might not be the first responders, it might be Hales Corners. So we asked that they get involved in Greenfield Police. They were very accommodating and got all, it's probably, it's pretty unique, it's gonna be a unique experience. They have all three municipalities working together and the two schools. Greenfield's having their training on Tuesday and Thursday of that week, and we have ours on Monday and Wednesday. So every teacher in the both districts should get some sort of training happening.
So there, if it's, so I understand it's a conceptual thing largely, but is there any plan by the other principals to have a breakout session for their staff?
Not at that time.
The uniqueness of their situation?
Not during that week. They certainly might do something like that afterwards or meet with-
Has it been suggested to you now or?
I'm not sure if it has been.
Every year, our parent chief goes through the building with the building principal just to see what's changed. So Hales Corners Chief will do that.
As far as- Each school has a plan, each school has a crisis plan in place that they update yearly, I believe, Matt, yearly? Crisis plan? Yes, each school has a plan. This is just to give some overarching ideas and trick and teachers more precise training.
So then they may need to reevaluate their plan that they have after this training?
Possibly, yeah, absolutely.
And maybe need to cover for their staff at some point.
Right.
So I wonder if they were planning on a breakout with their own staff?
Yeah, that would be a question for the building principals. And I think that some of that will develop as they see how the training goes. That'll be to see if there are things that they need to adjust or change. Thank you.
I'm just gonna, just gonna comment that the first, when I first heard of this, it was a parent meeting. I, it kind of hit home, how important it was to have the collaboration between the different municipalities that if something could happen, you would have to have a local resource muscle.
Right. Yeah, and that was, that was a big effort by Greenfield Police to get that, to make that happen. It's hard to get everyone's schedules together and get everyone on the same page. Everyone does things a little differently too, but to have all, all six, you know, both of these departments, three communities, should be, like I said, a pretty unique experience. Anybody else?
Thank you, David.
Great.
Thank you, Dr. Holtz, for helping.
Hey, I would just say to follow up with the comments you made, just so the boards are aware, we also do like collaborative training like this with regards to confined space at the middle schools. So we work with the same police and fire, and we also do diet training. So this is just gonna create, I mean, this is just, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Say that.
Next up, we'll have our item C, 2014-15 budget. And now, if you can pick out, right, or you left off?
Back to where I left off. We'll be sort of melding to each other.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure, we said this was possible action, but realizing that we're underclassing on the 25th, which will be the best time to meet the big publication requirements in case there are more questions to be played up over the next several weeks. And I had cited to you one example in there of why our budget is a moving target. And Matt called me over and told me that we're gonna have to spend some more money on the bus drive at Middle School. And then I walked in the office this morning and Mr. Green informed me that we had three new resignations. Boy, it's glad it's for filling them, but that's something that was not in the budget type of issue. We had to know what was gonna happen. Still have the recommendation for levying to the maximum amount allowable. If we do that, that would be a result of five and a half percent levy. We have a balanced budget. And fund balance will remain pretty much unchanged. And we would be able to use Fund 41 money if necessary. I did talk to at least the voice of the bear, this question was asked, whether folks like Moody's would pay attention to us spending down our 41 fund balance. She said, no, the only one they're interested in is the general fund balance. So there's that building. Rather than read through all of this, I guess I can ask if there are any questions?
So, just one-
For tonight, or for-
Right. But at the next meeting, we will propose, which includes, just in general, can you give us again that big picture summary, it's going to be a, I'm just trying to find the name, an increase?
Oh, seven, uh, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is a result of by itself is a 2.9% increase. And would result in a five and a half percent increase in property taxes because we are expected to lose a significant amount of our non-tax revenue that state aids of various types. And if you don't recall from the time we had Lisa out, their protection model, current aid formula, it doesn't look like our state aid is gonna be going up sometimes.
And the reason for the increase again?
Oh, well, the three major areas that drive our expenses, improvement of instruction, central services, which is technology and communication. And then what DPI calls termination benefits. It's pretty final, but that's payments made to or on behalf of retirees.
Alright, thank you, David, for the summary questions.
Yeah, can you give us those three numbers for those three different, you said those are the three main areas that are causing the increase in spending? Can you give us?
1.2%.
Yes.
Doug Boyer here with that. Is it safe to say that the reduction of state aid amounts to a lot of the?
Oh, yes, it is safe to say that. It amounts for about, almost half of what the increase would be that drives tax. So yes, let me see, it's 400 and some thousand dollars of state revenue. Let's see. On page fifteen, I entitled "Analysis of Budget Change by Function Object." Let me know if this is what you're asking about. I'll bet 742,000 dollars, about 300, if you look at the dollar change column far right, almost 380,000 dollars due to salary increases. Another 160,000 due to purchase services. That's things like our utilities, school buses. And then, let's see, third, equipment, 500 objects. They're up about 87,000 dollars. Primarily to technology spending. Is that it?
And the termination benefit?
It's 600, it's about 620,000, there's still another 150 or so that-
Is that termination benefit?
Oh. That, I had the termination benefits at about 430,000 dollars. Some of these are mixing functions and objects, so we had to be careful about that.
Alright. Questions, other questions?
Um. So I had asked you a question, if I asked you to be able to determine money that we had set aside?
Yes.
And we thought we'd know the next day, as to how big that number was?
Yes, and that was in materials that I sent out last.
And what was it, was it close to if you had a judgment?
I had a total of 980,000 dollars in there. The proposed amount had been reduced to 600,000.
Okay, so where are the 300,000 going?
Well, if you're going, what I'm recommending is that we leave that difference in the budget as a contingency for any unexpected causes. For example, to fill three new teaching positions already.
Well, we eliminated crisis, right?
Well.
Is there any other contingency to move that?
No, that's a very good question. Otherwise, everything that you have in the budget for salaries and benefits and so on is all accounted for, I can attach a name to everybody that's in there. We do not have the flexibility to anyone in the budget. And I would suggest you by doing this, we leave ourselves with a contingency for the year of about one and a half percent.
And do you have the actuals from 13th, 14th? That's two, close to 100,000, that's over? Negative?
Oh, um, yes. We were slightly over salaries, 30,000 dollars. And that, we'll let them know about sales, that's pretty close. And because of the changes that we made to our health insurance plan, I also had included a package of information about how health insurance, dental insurance, life insurance has dropped. And so we do have a creative increase in fund balance. And that brought a different figure to the results, so it's all yourself that comes in late. Determined, not reported late, so.
And what part of that number is? Under 100,000, under 500?
More like 4,000, 400,000 dollars. We really had a big drop in insurance claims.
Okay, so, I know I said we were 400,000 over?
Up to the good.
To the good, right. So you're asking for 300,000 for contingency? I think, I think we need, I think we need to reduce this budget somehow to get the number at 5.5.
Do you have a number in mind or?
Well, yeah, zero, it's mine that was that. Is there a real, oh, but- Is there a real, I don't, but we, you know, we have to stop spending. We, 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 the administration brings us several things throughout the year and we approve, we approve, we approve. But now, now is where we have to pay for it. And while all those things sound good coming to us, now we're hit with a five point five percent increase. Is there gonna be, because we doubled up the rollout on the iPads? Is there gonna be a lag of spending in the next plan to show that the next year we're not spending it? They're not asking for that? So you're not, you're not, of course, answering that?
Well, I'm looking for Eric if you have, it's not there, but that, oh, my notepad for the question.
I think a lot of that too, like, depends on us as a board, you know? You know, a lot of that will actually depend on us as a board, how we move forward with technology. Right now, we're at the end of our three-year technology plan. We did, we did move the rollout to primary school, so that did add, obviously, that cost this year. So going forward, we do the next plan. As, you know, as a board, we're gonna be the ones that will approve whether we're gonna continue spending or, what he said, or reduce that.
Let's give everybody a chance, whether or not you support a five percent, a point five percent? And then we'll discuss now what, John?
I have problems with it because, I mean, I hear we're doing less in the state, but we want to increase our spending. And, and the budget is predicated, the budget is presented to us predicated on taxing to the max. And I don't know that I wanna start by seeing how much money we can get maximum from the taxpayers and then work out a budget from there. I just, I'm uncomfortable with, with the idea of, you know, tax to the max and then see, see what we can do with it.
Could you clarify, is that how we do our budgeting? How do you do our budgeting? Do we say this is how much we can pass and then we find that again, or without you separate?
No, we have, the different departments submit their budgets. And if we find that it's going to be excess of the revenue limit, then we go back and, you know, go for some ways to cut it. I would say that budgets that have been submitted three years, if I've been here. Most everybody who's been frugal gets cited, cited some of those big ones before, technology, termination benefits, and so forth. And I would point out that only twice in the last five years have we, or that really once in the last five years have we had a tax levy that high. We had in successive years, one point eight, five point three, one point three, minus five point eight, zero, and then one point eight eight. So the district's been, I think the board's been doing a good job at holding the line. The eleven, twelve, and twelve thirteen tax levies were exactly the same. So you have been...
The reduction of state aid is what's really hurting us now because we'd be talking about a two percent, not a five percent. And, so, I mean, it's entirely of the board, or of tax, or women of the entire board. But we basically have to revenue from state in front of our local taxpayers. And when state pulls back, you know, the other side has to go more. I don't understand exactly why our neighbors actually see it harder than we do. But another reason for it, now with the state is five minutes is about.
Other comments? Um, is Doug, is the amount of money that we expect to realize from the change that we made in the parent paid busing for the out-of-district students? Is that included in the budget now?
I have that included in the budget.
Is it included in the budget?
Yeah, I mean, it'll materialize. I mean, that's like seventy thousand dollars.
Right. And then as far as hiring staff, you know, we can replace staff on a class-neutral basis. And I know we wanna hire the best possible people that we can hire. However, I think that comes, sometimes comes at a price that we may not be willing to spend. So we can certainly hire the best possible person we can get in the dollar amount that we're willing to spend. So I don't see that these three people that we need to replace now would add any, should add any money to the budget.
No, I would say, every time I hear this, the first thing I say to Joel is, is this cost neutral? And I guess he did a great good job last year because altogether in the general fund, we were about thirty thousand dollars over budget. On a budget of eleven million dollars, that's a quarter of a percent. To be perfectly balanced, so I guess it's a slight bit bad for that.
There was a question about this other three positions, and I don't think that that should make any difference with the budget.
No, I was just pointing out that so many parts of the budget are fluid. And, you know, we tried to pin it down here, and it pops up over here. But, no, I wasn't implying that these people are cost neutral.
And I, I think we covered most of this during the finance facilities meeting, hammering out the details, all the specifics of the unit. But I think as we go through it, to refine the budget even more, we find these, and obviously Doug's been doing this for a long time. I think we need to put the faith that he's gonna give us his best estimate, that's what we're looking for. And then hopefully we can adjust the tax level to meet that, so we're not at a disadvantage. We're also giving the district a chance to eavesdroppedly sell all these companies here. And then years going forwards, we don't end up in a negative balance on the year. Or have to seek shorter lending to get by if we sell whatever we need.
What I look at in this budget, I hope we can do even better at this. It isn't being driven by our goals of the district. And we've got some big goals this year that we're working toward in terms of implementing educated effectiveness, which was one of the staff increases that April supported. We're also looking at a cost of technology rollout, which, which our technology director might be making a pretty big case for why we needed to really change our plan and do that now because of the way our classrooms are configured, the way students move through the classrooms. And you couldn't just do it two years, two at a time at the highest level. I mean, it just, some of these things, just as we get closer to implementation, do become challenging. And we have to support, we have decided to support those initiatives. So I'm comfortable supporting this particular budget, knowing that in the history of the, you know, the last five years, we have some that are higher and some that are lower. But it all shouldn't be driven by this is how much we can pass. That's not the goal. The goal is, our number one goal is educating, making sure all of our kids are prepared for college and career. If we can make that case in this budget, to me, that's important. And in looking through the items where it already had to go up and where it had to go down, it certainly makes a lot of sense to me based on the goal that we've set in our strategic plan. So I can support this budget. I'm always opening to hear suggestions on how we wanna cut, where we should cut, and why.
Well, I just wanna kind of piggyback on to what you were saying as far as, you know, I, I'm not personally thrilled with, with the percentage of increase. However, I can track back, it's not based on taxing to the max. It was based, I, I go back and I, and I track it to the decisions we as a board are making. Now, you know, obviously, we're not gonna stay cost neutral if we're adding, you know, more effective, you know, effective education approaches. And we're not gonna remain cost, you know, neutral if we expand our technology rollout and we bring in another staff member to support, you know, the technology is hopefully issued properly by the teachers and the students to be worthwhile. So I see why the budget is where it is, and I don't think we really necessarily plan on losing four hundred thousand dollars in state aid either of making these decisions. So I understand why, why the budget is where it is for this year. What I would say is that we really need to go back after, you know, we make these decisions. We really need to evaluate, you know, after next year. Are we, you know, make sure we are, you know, what we're spending our money on is advancing our, you know, the education of our students, advancing, you know, the effectiveness of our teachers. I think we're really gonna have to look back and say, you know, is this, you know, for these good decisions? And we're gonna have to be accountable for it. But I understand why the budget is as it is, and I, I don't want people to think that we drive the budget based on how much we can spend, but whether, why we are spending it, where it ended up. So I think that's, that's what we need to understand.
You have a question?
Yes.
If you don't mind. Uh, Jen, the finance guy there, I heard, I heard you say three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for raises?
No, I didn't know.
That wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, my mistake then. I could've swore I heard that.
It's salaries, not just raises.
That was salary increases.
Salary increases?
And we added positions.
Add a position.
Okay. How is it that you can't plan for that? If the salary increases are already established by contract, alright, how is it you can't plan for that? In, in last year's budget for this year?
We do plan for it. I mean, last year, we had a budget for salaries of, it was eleven million dollars plus. And we missed the target by thirty thousand dollars. People move in and out of the district all the time. And we budget based on the people that are employed at the start of the year.
But you're also budgeting with the amount of teachers and salaries that you, you expect to have, okay? And that should be part of your budget that you should stay within, I would think.
Well, in, in total, we stayed within budget. And salaries in ninety-nine point seven percent, that's a pretty good accuracy, I would think, just about any budget.
Well, I, I mean, okay, that's fine. I would just like to see the, the numbers in black and white in front of me because I, you know, I'm hearing you. And I don't, I can't mash the two, okay? Because it sounds like you're asking for a five point two percent increase in, in the income ta, in the, in the real estate tax. You know what? I don't know where I'm gonna come up with that. Really? I'm not getting, I'm not getting a five point two percent pay raise.
Neither is anybody else in this.
No, I, I'm sure they don't. But where am I gonna come up with that?
That's why we have to make the case for why we're increasing this budget. And we do have a whole budget book that will be published. And you'll get a chance to look through every line item in there. This year's budget, we were proposing an increase based on some positions that we're adding. And costs do go up every year.
I, I understand it. Oh, believe me, I understand it.
You know, and the, so that's, that'll all be in the budget book that we publish.
Where, where can I get those numbers? And when?
Email, do you have a list?
Um, if you talk to me after the meeting, give me either a mailing address or an email address. I can send it to you.
These, these are not posted on the district website?
No, because they're just working documents at this point.
Okay. No, that's fine, 'cause I'd like to see, I'd like to see the breakdown of the numbers. Thank you.
We'll get those, thank you. Other comments, questions?
So I guess I'm, maybe I'm easily confused, but I'm trying to figure out, like, when I asked you about how those increases came, you mentioned the smallest one, you mentioned there's eighty-seven thousand dollars in tech. But we added a tech position, so like, is, that would consume most of the eighty-seven thousand dollars, I would think, or a good chunk of it. But, but you keep mentioning tech, that's one of the, tech is one of the driving, driving forces, yet it's like the smallest thing you mentioned. So...
It's the equipment and lease and purchase services are part that's driving it, is the tech.
So when I ask you about tech, I'm asking about the entire, the entire picture, how much more we're spending, how much more the proposal is to spend next year versus this year on tech to include like an added position that wasn't there before. Equipment, we weren't expecting the purchase, or, you know what I mean? Maybe I just need to sit down with you in your office and you can try and figure out what I'm asking in a convoluted way. Because I, and it seems like a bunch of these numbers are split up from, they're identified in different ways.
Yes.
And, and yes, they're all pertaining to the, depending on how you slice up, they're pertaining to the same subject, for example, tech. Some salaries are, are a result of tech.
Right, we, we budget in a multi-dimensional way. There's fun, function, like, say, English. There's object, notebooks, iPads, whatever. And either way that you do it, you end up with the same bottom line, or either that or a mathematically or a math fix. But it's, I'll, I could do that with you and show you how, you know, by function, this is how we record it, by object, this is how we record it.
That would help me to understand where the money's going because we just say, you know, salaries are gonna cost us this much more next year, but yet, if one of those is a tech position and it accounts for a reasonable percentage of that, then, you know, then we don't wanna count it twice by saying tech is going up this much. But on the other hand, the question is, how much is tech, how much more is tech going to cost us next year? In my mind, that would include an additional position, the salary for the additional position that the board added last month.
And you know that the state determines what percentage increase that the district's gonna pay to their staff. We don't know at this point if that number is gonna be for twenty, fifteen, sixteen. But that, as fact, is obviously in the budget as well, as soon as we get it. But I'm gonna send you some of that.
Any other questions? Not, and we'll move to item D, a WASB Leadership Conference update. Jonathan and I had a pleasure, we can tie together and talk about, you know, what we learned at the conference. Why don't we start? Don't we start? Uh, several good sessions, they're always good sessions, but the ones that I was particularly interested in were around the Common Core and we're going back on that and keeping it, we're still only in two content areas, math and language arts. And the more interesting part now is going to be next generation testing and assessments and how they're moving forward on those assessments. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're, but now we're gonna have every student in the district taking the ACT, which was really fascinating to look at the future and how we're gonna be using the ACT suite to do, to actually predict how a student at an earlier grade can, will do on the ACT. So it allows us the opportunity to really prepare our kids, even though not all kids are taught it. But the ACT is still going to become the, the measure for our kids' awareness. So that was really, really great. Some of their assessments are, they're not all online yet, but some of them will be. So we're, we're gonna have to give them a little bit of time to develop all of them online. But when they're online, then they're really much more efficient and effective in making the results back quicker. So we're moving, the DPI is moving in a great direction with the next generation testing. The, you know, current process where our kids now have to go somewhere else and have to pay to take the ACT. You know, when you think about those details, I haven't had kids in the system for a while. I mean, that's a big change. So all of our kids will be paid for by the district and it will be, it'll be all the kids, so everyone. And I think it sets the expectation that all kids could go to a conference they wanted to, even though all don't. So there's a real bad business to that. Uh, the other thing that I thought, I listened to a presentation on how the district report card was, was pulled together and the amount of work that went into that. And I still find that there are some downsides to it, but it's, it still will give, it's not a report that really we can use to drive change or something. But it is an accountability measure that we're all being held accountable for. So that was interesting to hear where they're going with it. So, um, that was interesting to hear where they're going with that. And at the moment, I think it's gonna stay the same for a while. The other, uh, very, this one really affects our budget and reaffirm the direction we're going in. And that is the educator effectiveness. Wisconsin, these are, these are happening across the nation, but in Wisconsin, we are moving to start to evaluate. Next year, all of our teachers will be evaluated based on half of their evaluation will be student learning outcomes. And it's for a teacher who's been teaching forever, this is gonna be a whole new thing to, you know, the council, or even for our new teachers. And then the other half is gonna be on their practice, which we've always evaluated, teachers picked up practice. And now half of that's gonna be, be on the actual, how, what can my kids learn? And they're going through a lot of changes at the Department of Public Instruction on how to make that happen, based on some, um, pilots that they ran last year. So there have been some changes in, in how they're going to do that. For example, they were gonna have, um, three long walkthrough visits by the principal. And now they're going to do five shorter ones because they think that would be more effective. You know, the principal has to visit the classroom, and, and over a three-year period of time, which is in one year, at least five times, to see, and then to observe how the situation is. There's gonna be a lot more, it is not a punitive, it's not an accountability measure. This is a growth measure to help our teachers grow the skills that they need as we continue to have to change and prepare our kids for the world that's changing. So it's a growth model at Wisconsin, too. I'm glad to hear that. It's gonna be difficult here for our teachers in the next year, these educator, these coaches that we hired. I heard other districts are doing similar, not all exactly the same, but similar, adding resources in, in their districts in each building to have a coach there to help their teachers go through these challenges. So, um, those are some of the things I got out of it. It's always great. I always come back feeling like we're really heading in the right direction, and maybe it has some districts, because of our administration and charge them ahead, so...
I think the key thing to the educator effectiveness is the fact that it's a work in progress. It's not meant as a gotcha, we didn't do this, it's meant as a working guide. We're starting at the beginning of the year, you grow, you see a vision, this is what I wanna work towards. As you go through the year, you look at that and say, well, maybe you can grow into this, or maybe you can adjust to this, or maybe that's not really accurate. Maybe we need to adjust to this, and that's where the coaching administrator is supposed to be there with the teacher, to help the teacher grow as an individual and as a teacher, and to make sure that their goals are, you know, if you're saying, I want every student to be able to read to a level K, then they should actually be reading to a level L, but they want to exceed. It's not meant as something where you're setting low goals, to where you're just exceeding and then you can say, I exceeded, I should get a pay raise based on that. It's designed to have them set realistic expectations, realistic goals towards, and to base it on the practice, as Ryan said, not just the ultimate results. It's a whole process looking through and building on year after year after year, to make sure that they're growing as a teacher and that the children are actually getting the outcome of it. And I know, Common Core obviously is a discussion that's a hotbed of opinions across the board. Um, so DPI has a lot of resources online that are user-friendly for anybody to access. Uh, I think it's, I didn't know about that before sitting in this conference. We did a lot of researching, a lot of digging, uh, but there, there's a wealth of resources available. We're gonna try to find a way to get a link to that through our web or something. But if you have questions, if there's concerns, a lot of misinformation out there, a lot of wrong information, um, go on then, ask, um, send it to us, ask, we'll try to get the resources. We're gonna see if we can try to get together some kind of meeting, uh, where we can bring in possibly somebody from, uh, DPI to talk with us about that, answer questions you may have. Don't know when that would happen, how feasible it is, but it's an idea because there is a lot of misinformation. We wanna try to just clarify that up. Uh, so if you have questions, go online, go to the government website, come to us, ask us, we'll try to point you in the right direction. But there's a lot of things coming, a lot of things happening, and, and a lot of it is good. It's gonna provide a better educational experience for, for kids. And I think that's the ultimate goal, that's what we need to focus on and keep working towards.
That's it. Thank you.
I said one quick little thought on this, who is, I, I do work, I walk with a, a teacher from a different district who has kinda gone through the educator process. And I said, it's a little cumbersome, but she did, she did appreciate some of the reflective, you know, pieces to it and felt that that was something that was beneficial to her. So, um, yes, it will be working for others. You know, the other thing is too, when we were discussing these coaches, I, I did call, like, around a couple other districts to kinda get some feedback. Um, and I did talk to a district who used teachers, and then what they did is they reduced their teaching time, you know, twenty percent, and then had them as coaches. And, um, that district did say that if he had to do a different league next time, he would do a different league, um, you know, not necessarily with the time between. They're not having a focus on that, so...
I did wanna, I wanted Jonathan to explain that pretty well, which I didn't realize, how do you measure the student learning outcomes? They set their goals. And then there's, there's a form that they're gonna use, and then they're either, is it below needs or exceeds? There's that group. So every teacher will be evaluated on the student learning outcomes, using that same measure across the state, every district. And I think it's online, I do believe it's all, that's all.
Boy, I need to search on it.
Correct.
The other thing we're trying to take into account is the reality that in today's environment, in our schools, there's so many different people involved. It's not just a student has one teacher all day. There's a reading coach, they have reading instructors, they have math instructors, they have tutors, they have special needs instructors. So it's understanding how all of these factor into the educational experience for the one student, as opposed to you have one teacher, one student. It's just really taking a look at, okay, who's involved in the student's daily routine? What impact are they playing? And then making sure that those resources are available for that student going forward and improving them, I believe. And that's one of the things we're working towards, trying to find a way to grade it or rate it as a teacher level. Because how much involvement does a reading coach have for a student's reading? Is it the teacher that spends ninety-five percent of the time with them, or is it the reading coach that spends that five percent? And, and they don't, they haven't got there yet, but they're working towards it. So it's really taking a holistic approach to, uh, a child's educational experience and seeing what that means and who's involved in it. And making sure resources are available to improve that and find a better way to do it if necessary.
Can't you tell I'll talk to you? There's probably even more updates, but you can do them.
Yeah, in fact, I can, okay, I can do all of this.
Before, yeah, you, um, there's, alright. Any other questions about the WASB conference? Then we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Um, a lot of our, and then we create, which focuses on how we can support our teachers through the process, because it is a challenge for them, it's gonna be the first year where it's actually implemented. And you, like, your friend, the pilot, um, you know, member guy, all of them through it. And so, can we scary or intimidated for a teacher that's been out there for twenty-five years to hear, whoa, I've gotta do all this stuff now? Um, so, a lot of our August Institute is gonna be focused on trying to call people and say, we're gonna be there for you, we'll, you know, we'll get through it together. And it's gonna be a, it is gonna be an improvement. You know, I, I really believe it's something that'll raise the bar for us to get involved.
Just knowing that it's not a gotcha.
Yeah.
Right? So, let's work together, because, um, that's what I'd like to do.
And all the key players signed a document that they posted right on the DPI website that said, um, it's not to be used for that.
Exactly.
Um, on the superintendent's report, uh, when we started at the legal conference, the Wisconsin Supreme Court decision regarding the constitutionality of that canon was, uh, placed, released on the very first day of our conference. And if you want to see a bunch of exciting attorneys, well, thanks, for the Supreme Court, let something go. Um, and it, obviously, Judge Close's decision was overturned by one of five to two, only at ten. Um, our district has been operating under rules back then for the past several years. So personally, as, as a law enforcement administration board, we see very little change to standard operating procedures, which are outlined in our general court policies. So, I mean, the court policies, we're really getting toward them from, um. One of the things they pointed out is, uh, they spent a whole section on public comment participation. And we do a lot of case studies, and the very first thing they started with was a US Supreme Court decision. And, um, they said it's inherent in the republican form of government that direct public participation in government policymaking is limited. Disagreement with public policy in the support of official respects of this is registered principally at the polls. Which I've heard you guys say more than once or twice in the past. Um, during the recent summer legal seminar, um, like I said, they wanted a good share for the legal aspects of public participation. They felt this topic moved up in importance as a result of the Supreme Court ruling. Um, they noticed that in the absence of collective bargaining agreements, um, individuals may be trying to discuss some of the processes contained in the handles of the court policy and going directly to public comments. So these attorneys pointed out that the court fails to clearly limit public comment items or handle agenda. The court loses control of the directional board meeting. It's also aggressive violating the First Amendment rights while at the same time violating individual property rights. And you guys are gonna say, you heard us tomorrow morning.
Yes, sir.
All over the House, I believe. Um, but they suggested limiting public comment only to listed agenda-type topics, limiting the total amount of time we can vote to hear in public comments, and limiting the amount of time to speak when we address the court. We do a lot, we're certainly things are ready, so it's just fine to me. Um, let's see. And they also recommended, uh, might, you know, the reason we're gonna do that, we're gonna change as soon as possible. And I've got a decent, just a few last things for us, for the business policy. Um, the administrative enforcement retreat was also pretty productive. We gave a strategic spot analysis, you know, what's working, what's not working, what we have to do better at, um, what we're gonna strengthen up, we're already doing well. And we went into some lengthy planning sessions relative to building wall setting. Uh, educator effectiveness was a big topic. Teach scape, the August Institute continuing the journey to create a positive school culture, um, for our teachers and their commitment to being successful with our kids. And last but certainly not least, um, the big thing coming up is the Southwest Sovereign Business Education Summit. More than hundred, hundred twenty-five business education and government, government leaders are anticipated to convene at our beautiful, wonderful animal artis. Um, and that's gonna be on Thursday, August twenty-first. The community-wide event will bring together local business leaders, governors, teachers, elected officials, and it'll serve as a step toward building a common vision for the region, and which current and future generations will find success and prosperity. Um, as you guys already know, the, the networking sessions, roundtable discussions, and a keynote presentation from Mr. Wilson, um, the Chair, President, and CEO of Badger Metering. Um, the Milwaukee-based company is the leading manufacturer of market-related flow measurement solutions. Uh, with a primary focus on the water industry, which is kinda interesting, especially with us having, uh, headwaters, we have a new property. Um, co-sponsored, the event is both sponsored by the Whitlock School District and the City of Greenfield, with the help of Greenfield and Redale School Districts, and those of Redale and those corners, and several, several other separate organizations. And the event is aligned with the forward-thinking communities initiative. So, um, we have, we have stuff online, if people are interested, they obviously can talk to me, I'm at the Mac Nance Keith this morning, um, to confirm up to some of the details. So it, it looks like things are going along well, and hope a lot of the workers get a chance to attend. If you don't, we'll have a nice report for you at the event.
Sorry. Thank you. Uh, any questions for Dr. O?
Um, from our staff, from our team, we have like our teachers. Uh, it went out to all our teachers and then, do we have numbers, you know, the, we know how many of our teachers are?
I gave my one and only guy, Peter Mike, at Starbucks this morning. Um, but roughly, we have thirty, um, I don't have Greenfield's number, so... We have thirty staff from Redale, thirty from us from Whitlock. Oh, we will have somewhere in that area from Greenfield, but then the rest, we may have a hundred or thirty more stuff with us. Um, and when, uh, we originally planned on a larger group, but when, um, schedule kept, we found that we shouldn't be able to, and cut out a lot of, uh... But we still have a lot of good things.
We have a nice representation, the Crowder District, of the Great Hall.
I'm gonna be sending out the, um, the bubble back newsletter, um, for Tuesday tomorrow. And the August Institute's schedule, and let them know that if they're still interested, um, our names filed, that, of course, in the week. And everybody that is monitoring, will...
Great. Thank you. Next up, we have our draft, time taken for the approval of the capital improvement projects. And I am going to miss Stephanie's voice in this, but we can, we've talked, so I think we're pretty much on the same page. But I just wanted the board, we wanted to have a conversation and look at, the committee's been reviewing plans, and this is where, you know, as far as all our major capital improvement ideas or needs we've been looking at in the financing facility committee. And so, there's the committee does their work, and the full board, and the administration staff, and then when we're looking at something that's paid, we have to involve our parents and our people. So, in your package was a proposed capital improvements project plan. It's a working document, and it really is, as the conversation started, I think for the next couple of months, it's pretty, pretty good, right? Stephanie, that we're gonna have, um, the tour of the facilities, and we're also, after the tour, gonna talk about the plans that we're looking at on those things. So, that'll move us forward, since we're looking at the building that night, and we can actually talk about it. Um, then maybe, then the committee can look at the rest of the schedule and, you know, continue to look at the time, the time, what, what do you wanna recommend to the full board? Because the committee works with the board, and then the full board would be looking at a final, potential final schedule. And then, of course, if that, if, if we are comfortable, then we should have to start picking some of these ideas out to the staff and to the committee. And this lays out some of the stuff. And we're a lot of, and Matt's gonna take it over. And he's gonna use Google, possibly use Google Docs to, meet all the board members in to this document, and put this up on Google Docs. And then we could get notification anytime the schedule changes. And as he gets reports and things corrected, yeah, he's...
Yeah, we could use, we could use a, we can create a calendar, and we'll, my calendar, we could call it the C I P calendar or something. As edits and changes, I understand, it's a, it's a great tool on learning how to use it in my department, I think, will, will offer it.
Okay. So, we're looking at, you know, a lot of just conversations in September, October, feedback from the committee, feedback from our parents and our staff. Um, possibly by December or January, you might have something more named up. Is that correct? Is that pretty much reflected? And then again, more, more communication with the public and getting more feedback, is this the direction we wanna go? That's what this document, any questions?
I just wanna comment that this document is in the public, under the board packages, under Whitlock Board agendas. It is a package, it's kind of the, based on the timeframe and, and to kind of reassure people that in October, we were gonna go out to the community. So, so if people wanted to look at what we were talking about, it's there.
I think it's great. It's, uh, a good start. We need to be active and, uh, proactive and get moving. Thank you for doing this.
It was a joint effort. But it's so easy for a month to slip by, right? Because we only meet once a month until we don't want our parents, our kids have needs at ACT. And you wanna take the chair, yeah? Any other questions?
Just wanted to emphasize that there's gonna be a lot of listening sessions, a lot of people involved. Because ultimately, the committee's gonna decide whether they agree, or they'll come up with an idea. I'm sorry, well, the committee's gonna have, um, probably a lot of listening sessions, a lot of community input, because ultimately, the community makes the decision on whether they agree with what is recommended by the board. After the board does their needs assessment, says, you think this is what needs to be done? What do you think? You know, so there'll be a lot of, probably more meetings than you'll ever wanna attend, but there'll be lots of meetings.
Do you have questions?
No, I just...
I mean, the reality is, is we're public schools. They're our schools, and, you know, and we have, we have to decide, it's the first schools as a group, and we also have to, you know, agree, have a fund of, you know, what we wanna do. So, they are the public schools, and we have to...
I just wanna make sure you're just not raising your goals too high.
I expect.
Okay? Because I can't come up with five percent.
Let's say it's our goals.
That's, that, that would be more politically correct, yes.
Our goals. Thank you. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. We don't get a lot of visitors.
Really?
Yes. Yes. Yes, yes.
Jonathan, I'm looking at my current road, I'm probably pretty far off on here. You said something about the ACT earlier, all those students take that? Does health planners participate in ASVAB, whatever, for agents?
Yes.
You didn't?
Yes, they do.
Okay, all right. You know, that's the armed services location, I have to do that here test. If people want to join the military or just to contest, you can, they give you a score to put in the military and whatever like that. So I was making sure if the guys are armed, I could talk to you about it.
Thank you, thank you. Next up, Jonathan. John too, he knows all about that, thank you very much. Okay, next we have comments from the school board regarding the agenda items for future consideration. No discussion or action, will you take it at this meeting, Stephanie? Does anyone want future consideration? Had Kathy check, we just have two things that we're going to work in at the right time. One is safety and one's going to be a follow-up of the new year. So all those are directly on here, so we're going to follow up on those two things. Was there any new items?
I'd like to report on the breakdown last year, four years of resignations. I mean, we've had, I don't know if you can be as specific as why, some, as I can see some state, some statewide, but. It may, it may give us some information.
All right. That one, that's possible to have also some information, that sort of information in run, numbers from neighboring districts. Should you share? I'm just asking, it might, it might tell us more than just the raw numbers, because whatever number we get, whatever kind of numbers we get for the last four years. Might not, you know, I mean, playing out those, it might actually be a lot better than other districts are doing as far as retainability, or a lot worse than we would know. With neighboring data, something like that.
Any other agenda items? If you're interested in them, seeing none, we'll move to board member announcements.
I had a question on the space, gentlemen.
Same here, can you?
Nothing, it's spelled, on the budget, when are we supposed to take a vote to publish it? Because that's what it said. It said, board needs to approve the budget.
All right, at the maximum.
Uh, yes, I'll set it on this one, that's fine.
All right. Board member announcements, does anyone have an announcement?
I do. Exciting news about the block party. Matt has encouraged the committee to possibly relocating to Falcon Field. And the committee was there last week to review the area. There is some uneasiness because we're not on 116, a lot of you can see us, but the savings to the district will be pretty, pretty great. And so the block party is going to be held at Falcon Field this year, see how it goes.
All right. Number thirteen.
Number thirteen.
One of the nice media reports we did. All right, any other announcements by board members? I have a couple. One is that the regional meeting is coming up on September 18th. So I know a couple of us are planning to go to that, that's usually a nice way to, again, network with other districts and update on what's going on. And it's Greg here in 1944, so we need some art, we need to be jamming. And we did go on behalf of the board and Forward Thinking to the village board last week Monday and talked about Forward Thinking. And hopefully, they are the last of the six partners to approve a resolution and hopefully they will be moving forward on that soon. They are very interested in continuing, they have conversations with this board. Because they do have questions around some of these same items that they're reviewing now. And so just by going there, be able to answer a few of your questions and hopefully can do a follow-up, especially with the. So that was that. That's it. Board member announcements, I would like to gain motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? All right, both, seeing none, motion to adjourn, and you all for coming.